Hey guys, well let's get to it. Unfortunately, I have to get off by 6:10 or 6:15. So I'm hoping, I can't imagine we need more time than that to create our list. But if we do, you're welcome to continue without me. I apologize for that. I don't know. I've been thinking about the best way to do this. I think maybe the way to do it is just to create a laundry list and then we can sort it out and prioritize it.
Yep.
I don't know how everybody else feels. I did get, let me read, let me read what Phil sent me. Phil said, Peter, for this evening's discussion broadband, I would like to see a significant contribution to CB fighter fiber 100,000, which would be matched. This would cover the connection cost of approximately 50% of the underserved residences in Middlesex. Number two, he has new gear for the fire department. I had that on my list also. And number three, other than that, I suspect I can support pretty much anything that anyone else at the board identifies. Again, I don't, I don't think we're going to be picking and choosing tonight. I think we're going to create a rough list to start from and then work on it and have a public hearing and see what the public has to say. And then we'll, we'll fine tune it. The only thing I think we need to keep our eye on, and I keep saying it, I know, is this match business with CB fiber, because I'd like to take advantage of that opportunity if we can. But other than that, there's no rush to do any of this, Dorinda, correct?
No, we have, we have time to use it. It's got to all be used by 2026. But in regards to the CB fiber, I think we should act on that sooner than later and not wait.
Right.
Because I guess there's a limit to, I think there's a limit to how much they're giving out.
In terms of matching, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, they posted something on Front Porch Forum just recently, basically saying that the match is a first come, first served. I believe it was a million dollars that they had available for the match. And that they said that several municipalities have already taken them up on that offer. So, you know, as time goes on, their, their ability to provide us or other folks with match, you know, is decreased. So.
No, I read this, I read the same thing, Randy. Dorinda, remind us what, what's the total? I know it's a little uncertain, but what's the total amount we expect to get in round numbers?
When it's all done, 515,000 and some change.
I mean, I, I don't know how everybody else feels and I'm not trying to jump the gun, but I would suggest we give them 100,000. We can always give them, we can always give them more later if we have more. But we've got what, 160,000 or something?
No, we've got, we've got 250 right now.
Okay. Well, let's give it to them, I said. Well, we don't have to, we don't have to say that right now, but I, I don't think it's a bad idea to maybe decide that tonight. I can't imagine, I can't, I mean, Phil certainly isn't going to object. He's subject, suggesting it and the rest of us are here. So.
How much was the fire department request too? Was that like 30k?
It was somewhere between 13 and 20,000. So I would suggest, just to be on the safe side and knowing that the price of everything seems to be going up like a skyrocket. We, we pencil in 20,000 for the time being and see what, see what he comes up with.
I'm going to build a spreadsheet right now, see how much we spent.
Yeah, but no, no, go, go right ahead. That'd be great. I mean, the other thing, the other thing that I think we should do, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to jinx the, jinx the deal, but I think we should put money aside, some money aside, in case we don't get this grant for the town hall. So we can go ahead and do that work. And I'm not suggesting that it's necessarily the same amount that we're doing the grant for, but it should be some sum of real money. What do you think Liz? Maybe 30,000?
Uh, yeah, I would say, I think we're actually quite hopeful that we're going to get this grant, just the way that they've been talking with us.
All I'm, all I'm saying is,
Yeah, I would say 30.
That'll guarantee we get the grant, right?
Right.
Money right away anyway. I'm just saying on our spreadsheet, plug it in.
Do we have a sense from CB fiber? Do, does anybody know what their original ask from the town was?
Their original ask was they wanted it all, Randy.
What was that dollar value?
I think they thought it was like 350. Does that, is that what we originally thought it was, Dorinda? I can't remember. This was way off.
I think it was, I think it was in that vicinity.
But all, all I'm saying is if we, if we do 100,000 now, and a year from now, we have extra money or we haven't been able to spend it all, or we think we should give them some more. We come sure they'll happily take more. I don't know. I don't know how everybody else feels. I just, I am really motivated to take advantage of that match.
Yeah, and my, my knee jerk, quite honestly, was when I was thinking numbers in my head, it was, it was a little above that 100, that 100,000. And I was like at 125 in my head when I was considering like what seemed reasonable. But I, I didn't know what the ask was originally and how much that contribution actually went towards the installation. So it sounds like that might get us more than 50% at the.
The thing that's a little fishy and unfortunately, who is, who is our representative now, Sarah? Cause I got an email, I got an email from the president of the CB Fiber Board saying our representatives have not been showing up.
I don't know, representative is David Lawrence, and I think we're still looking for a backup. We had.
I have a backup.
Who is it?
It's my neighbor Bruce.
Bruce, Bruce Stevenson?
Yeah.
I don't know if he's been formally appointed. Maybe he has.
He hasn't, but I would like him, he would like to be on it. And I said I would bring it up at a meeting.
Why don't we put that on the May 3 meeting? Peter, if you could just slow down for a second. When you read, when you went through Phil's email, first of all, I need a copy of it. But you said, if we provide $100,000, we get a match, that gets us 50% of what?
He says, hold on, let me, let me read it.
Just a little slower.
Yeah, I know. I'm a little wound up. I'm sorry. I've had a busy day.
Okay.
I'm back to full power after my trip. Watch out.
Okay. Randy alluded to it too.
Trying to read the wrong thing here. 100,000, which would be matched. That would cover the connection cost of approximately 50% of the un slash underserved residences in Middlesex.
Okay, thank you.
Now, my understanding of this is, and it's been a little confusing, and I've been trying to read the CB Fiber stuff. But when I had the conversation with them back six months ago, it was clear that the town got no direct benefit from our contribution. So yes, maybe that amount of money covers that. But what they explained to me then, unless they've changed their story, is that it's all just going in the pot. So it reduces the amount of debt, but it doesn't offer any special deal for the town of Middlesex.
So, so I think that that was the message when all of this first was circulated. But with this ARPA money being put in play, I believe the language has then changed and said that the monies that the town, the towns give directly impact the town itself.
So I tried to read that three times and every time I read it, I come back. I mean, they're trying to make it sound like that because they got a lot of push, pushback. I'm not, I'm just not sure it's really true. And I haven't been at any of the board meetings or heard any of the discussion. But regardless, I think it's a good thing to do. And whether it's 100,000 or 125,000, we can always give them more later. But I'm interested in other people's thoughts, but we're getting, I'm putting the cart in front of the horse here. So what else have we got to?
The roads.
Well, we, so Dorinda, I've read all the same stuff that you've read. I know you went to the meeting, which I didn't, which I didn't attend. But you're satisfied that we can use any of this money for our own town infrastructure, meeting roads, buildings?
Yeah. So what they want you to, it's whatever is what they consider lost revenue or whatever. I take it that we can use it for infrastructure. They talk about using it to winterize meeting spaces, to do all that type of stuff. And so I think, and that brings me to not just the roads, but I think we need to do something in the interim to the town hall. Be it a heating system, we just spent 800 and some 900 dollars on a septic. Hopefully that might carry us through on, on getting that repaired. But I do think, whether we sell the building or whatever we do with the building later on, I think these fixes still need to be done. And.
Definitely, I couldn't agree more. We definitely need to have a heating system. We definitely need to have a functioning water system. The only, the only thing that, that I'd like to hold off on a little bit is the, is a new lift. Because who knows? I mean, yes, is it going to be advantaged to a potential user of that building to have it be handicapped accessible? Maybe, but also maybe not. So.
And there are grants for those, for doing specific things like that. And I would just, I want to add that based on our town plan and the energy plan that's associated with it, that we don't want to just jump to replacing the same old heating system. And I think we should still, if we're going to get this grant, we'll be able to see this stuff hopefully this summer to be able to know like the state of affairs for the town hall.
Once Sarah has her chainsaw, she can go in the woods and cut wood. We can put some wood stoves in there.
Well, that's an option. But we could say, I, because I think also what we're going to, you know, we're going to be looking for, and I'm wondering, Dorinda, if you know the answer to this, is that, you know, if we're looking for grants to help us with actually rehabilitating the town hall, can we use some of this money towards match for that? Okay. So that we may want to think about, because we may need a big lump sum for something like that. It could be, you know, that we need a $100,000 match or something like that.
Yeah, you probably, you definitely can use it for that. But I do think there is, and not the lift so much, but there's an immediate issue there. I was down there the other day. We had our three new listers in the office. We had the person from Nemrick. This is all in the bookkeeping side of the office. We had a bookkeeper and we had myself in there. So you had five people in there. The three listers were gathered around a desk, which is your standard office desk. And I think that we need to do something in the interim, just to get us through down there. So that was one thing I noticed that was on my list and.
But what is it that you're asking for? I'm sorry, more desk space?
Well, just, I think there is some remodeling down there that needs to be done. The windows upstairs are, you know, it's like sitting there with the window open. And if you're going to keep Sarah up there and anybody else.
Yeah.
Um, there's definitely, the downstairs ones have been replaced, but it's the upstairs ones that haven't. But that was just temporary. I have it down as temporary fixes to the building.
Well, I think they, well, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No. So that was kind of where I was going with that one.
If anything, anything that's going to, you know, presumably, we're not going to bulldoze that building no matter what. So what it's going to come down to is, are we going to use the building? Are we going to sell it to somebody else? Well, having decent windows in there, having a decent heating system in there, you know, whatever, I think is only going to, I mean, we may not get it back dollar for dollar, but we'll certainly get a lot of it back. The other, the other thought I've had for a long time and, you know, is we overall, you know, the upstairs now is not used for meetings. It's only what I call Sarah's auxiliary office. Well, could we set up a couple of more workstations up there? Sure we could. I mean, do we need to make sure the heat works and like Dorinda says, it isn't like the, the, the bridge, open bridge on the battleship in a North Atlantic storm up there. But there's quite a bit, there's a lot of space up there that could be utilized now, whether we move the whole list or operation. I don't know how we would, I don't know how we would do it, but just give up the idea that other than the select board space, that we're going to have a meeting space in that building. But anyway, we can talk about that. But I, I agree, putting some, I mean, I think, don't get me wrong, guys. Other, other than spending a boatload of money on the roads, the other, and the other thing we haven't talked about is the town garage, which could certainly use some help. You know, half a million bucks is a lot of money. We're going to, we're, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure Victor and Shane could, could spend every penny of it if we gave it to them. But I don't, I don't think that's what we really want to do either. I think this is a, I agree with Phil Scott. This is like a once in a lifetime opportunity to take care of some serious stuff that we really, we really need.
Okay. I added retention bonuses for the road crew. Didn't we talk about that? Like, or, you know, sign on bonuses. Didn't we talk about using some of that money?
Well, I think we had decided between the bookkeeper and the, what we did in upping all the wages. It cost us about $50,000 to do that. So I think we've kind of already included what we've already done as money being spent towards that.
So we can, we can post date?
Yes, we can, we can go backwards. Yep.
So, but do we want to consider, you know, since we're having a hard time hiring and people are, you know, basically moving on to different road crews where they're doing better bonuses in order to retain people? Do we want to have some money set aside, you know, for that purpose? Like Callis is giving a $2,000 sign on bonus for their road crew job that they have posted right now.
Yeah, Sarah.
I talked to the Callis, one of the Callis Town Clerks today about that. And he said, it's $2,000 spread over two years, just to give you an idea like that. Yeah.
That's not so great.
That's not so great. So just, it's not like they give them a check when they walk through the door.
Okay, good.
I, I think most of them are like that though, is where they give them a small piece up front. And then once they're on for a year or whatever, and they've stayed there, then they get referral fee type deal. I know that most, most places look at the, the second lump sum payment at a year, at the one year mark.
Yeah, I agree, Randy.
So you're saying, back to Dorinda's comment, you said that we probably already spent 50,000 on the salary increases, the bonuses and all the fringe and everything that is associated with that?
We're making, we're making a little of that up though, aren't we, Dorinda? Cause we're down a person on the road crew.
We probably are, but that was, you know, that was kind of what we, when we did the math back when it was all happening, we figured it'd come in somewhere around a $50,000.
I'll keep it in there.
Yeah. And.
I spent 300 so far.
Wow.
300? How did we spend that already?
20,000 on the fire department uniforms, 100,000 on CB fiber, 30,000 for the town hall planning grant, 50,000 for a town hall rehabilitation grant match, which might be 10%. Remodeling the town hall with temporary fixes at 50,000 and retention bonuses and salary increases at 50,000.
I think the temporary fixes at the town hall for 50,000 might be more than what we really want to put into it, don't you?
I have no idea. Things are so expensive now.
I have no idea. I know, I know.
The corruption is going to be the lift. Didn't we get an estimate last year that the lift was going to be 20,000 right there? And if it was 20,000 last year, it's probably 25 or 30,000 this year.
You know, God bless you. That's nice of you to say last year. That was three years ago. It was $20,000.
About 50,000 is probably a good place to start.
Right.
And don't forget, and don't forget the radon mediation.
Hold on, guys. I still think we wait to see what we come up with so that we can, yes, we should fix these things, but we might not need to fix the elevator if we're selling the building, right? And there are grants specifically to fix.
I agree. And we might not, you know, hopefully we get this grant and we don't have, we don't have to spend that money. I mean, we can always, I think the balancing item on all of this is going to be between what we put into the road. Well, what we put into our buildings, what we put into the roads and what we give to CB fiber. You know, that's, that's going to, what's going to bring us up to the half a million dollars.
Yeah, the roads, if we add in 300, I've spent 500,000.
Randy.
Just, just bringing up the point that, you know, through this feasibility study that we're going to be doing on the town hall or this exploration study, whatever you want to call it. One of the things that this money could be spent for, if, if they decided to build a new building and just the discussions about losing our food shelf and whatnot, that this money specifically calls out items like that or other, other services provided and, and the ability to spend money on building something for that purpose. So I don't think that it, it's necessarily, you know, we can paint the framework, so to speak, but I, I think that we need to keep things like that in mind that we might not know for another year.
Right. And we have time, and we have time.
Yeah.
The other thing, the other thing that keeps rattling around in the back of, back of my mind, and I know I've brought it up before, is, you know, one of the things we need to do early on in this town hall project, depending on, you know, where we go with the state police, who knows where, but to find out what the potential sales value of our existing town hall and fire station is. I mean, if that's, if that's 350 or 400,000 or who knows, who knows what it is, that'll build a damn nice town clerk's office wherever we want to build one.
I would think that'd be part of this study, right Liz?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it definitely is.
So one thing, and I think Dorinda, this has changed since we first talked about it. Because one of my ideas too, was to donate some amount of it, 10, 20,000 to the Middlesex Community Fund, which gives out grants to people who, you know, apply for any kind of reason, right? Like they might need assistance with some pain for something that they can't get as a benefit someplace else, like heat or something like that. And, or it could be, you know, something like, I think the energy fair is applied for like a few hundred dollars to, you know, provide a prize or something like that at the energy fair. So I'm wondering if we, because we don't have the, you know, specific auditing that we thought we were going to have, we could put it to the Middlesex Community Fund, which was built specifically during the time of COVID to help community members in need. And that way, you know, we could have a nice balance there to be able to support our townspeople who may have a need.
It can't go into our funds. We'd have to give it to, if it's its own organization.
It's its own organization. It's a 501(c)(3).
Right. So we, that's one of the stipulations. You can't put this away for a rainy day. So, but you can be creative with this. So if you have, say, $30,000 sitting in your town hall building fund, you could spend $30,000 out of this money for something else. Take the money out of the, you know, use the money that's in that building fund and it still would remain the same. It wouldn't be like you're funding that. So, you know, you just would be replacing the money. It's not like you would be stocking it away. So there's a potential to move funds around if we needed to use funds from one thing to another. Because there is other thing, I, I'll give you what, a couple of things that I thought of. Not only the turnout gear for the fire department, they're talking about air packs. And they came to us two years ago about a new rescue vehicle. And looking at the capital spending plan, they don't have the vehicle being purchased, I think, for another, I think, three or four years, which I don't know if our current one is going to hold up that long or not.
It's going to cost a fortune to maintain it if we keep it on the road for that many years.
Right. So I'm wondering if we should, you know, start looking at where we have placed this, the funding for the capital spending plan and see if there's an urgency that should be dealt with sooner while we have the money as opposed to, you know, just funding it each year. And then that gives us, that gives us the, you know, the opportunity to start building that fund.
Right. I agree with that. Cause if we, if you were able to purchase it now with this money, which there is a provision for, for safety services, including the purchase of vehicles.
You're breaking up. You're breaking up, Randy.
And you could basically start.
You're all broken up.
Well, what I, the other thing I like about, and I, I was thinking about the air packs, but, but you're right, Dorinda. Those air packs are going to be a big deal when they come up. And we, we've been hoping there was going to be grant money to pay for those, but maybe this is the time just to say, hey, this is the time to do it. And the other thing I like about it is when we're bringing the fire department along into this merger mode, to show them some real financial support from this with a rescue vehicle and air packs or whatever it is, I think would go a long way towards making them feel pretty good about the town of Middlesex and being part of the town of Middlesex, hopefully.
Would you like to know how much I've spent now?
Yep.
800,000.
Time to start cutting.
Time to cut our budget.
I've got my, where are they? I've got them right here. I'm ready.
Well, the roads I put in is 300. So if we cut those out, we will have spent the full 500.
Well, don't forget, we still have fund balances. So, you know, it's, there is money that's socked away for future stuff. So.
How much is in our fund balance?
That kind of offsets a few things. Well, between all the funds, we've got 462,000.
Oh, that's not bad.
No. But, so those, that was a couple of things, the air packs, the vehicle and the turnout gear for the fire department. The other thing was, I still think we need to pursue some, the equipment to hold meetings. What, no matter how we do it, I don't think ORCA probably, I mean, that's good for select boards, but I don't think that's going to take care of our other budget committee or, you know, the planning commission, anything like that. They're not going to want to be attending all those meetings. So, and you're not talking a ton of money there. You're probably only talking a couple thousand, 3,000 maybe. I don't know.
I was thinking, I was thinking 4,000, but yeah, I think you're in the right range and I think we should do that. Yes. I think we need to be set up to, to do that. It's interesting. So everybody's been saying these hybrid meetings are a nightmare. Well, guess what? I attended a hybrid rotary meeting yesterday where there were probably 18 people in person and six people zooming in. It worked fine. And they didn't make, what, what they did was they had the people who were there in sort of a horseshoe arrangement. And they had the camera way back. So they didn't zero right in on whoever was talking. But for that number, it worked fine. There was no problem at all. So that encouraged me to think that we could potentially do some kind of hybrid thing and have it, and have it work without having it be a nightmare. And, you know, the, the key is the people who are, who are dialing in just have to respect, be respectful when they interrupt the meeting. Cause it's hard to expect somebody to be sitting there looking at the screen when somebody's frantically waving their hand. But I'm just telling you, I was, I was pleasantly surprised how it worked. And they didn't have an owl, which was, you know, peering around at the individuals that were talking or anything like that. So I don't know. I, what I'm saying is I agree, Dorinda.
I like Dorinda's idea of looking at the capital plan and identifying something that seems, you know, sort of a big purchase that we're always like, are we going to pay for it kind of thing without?
Well, there's two things for the fire department. The rescue, the rescue truck and the, and the air packs. I was, I actually somehow, don't ask me how, I probably clicked when I should have clacked one night when I was half asleep. But I'm on this, this site where they keep showing me all the used fire equipment that's for sale. You can buy it. No, you can. You can buy, no, you can buy a pretty nice used rescue truck, which I think would meet our needs for like twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. I mean, really nice, is it seven or eight years old with twenty thousand miles on it? Yeah, but, that'd be perfect for us.
Oh, good, I can cut a hundred thousand out of the budget, I put it in at a hundred and twenty-five.
No, 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 it definitely doesn't.
Liz.
Yeah.
Seems how you're, you're the only one that can see all of your numbers, and you're just kinda putting some figures in there, and I don't know where all these figures are coming from. Yeah, that's what I thought. Anyway, um, a, a couple of comments, I, you guys kinda went through everything. I, I did have one other item I'll bring up in a minute, but, one of the things, before we spend any of this money, we do have to have public hearings, correct?
I don't think we have to, but I think we should have.
Okay. So, on my, my point is this, uh, I do agree with Randy, I had put down a hundred and twenty-five thousand on that. On that, uh, CV fiber thing, but if we find out, I think we need to find out if that's exactly the way. It's been interpreted that, that the money would be spent in Middlesex, if they did that match. I think we should do that right away. If we don't have to, and then, and then have the public hearing on the rest of the money that we don't spend.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, I, I wanna be, I wanna be clear about that. I think that amount of money is definitely gonna be spent in Middlesex, but it isn't like, because. They have our money to spend in Middlesex, that our Middlesex ratepayers are gonna pay lower rates. Now, there is talk, and help me out here Randy, there was talk of, of hookup costs, that we could potentially cover hookup costs.
I, so I think that, I think that this ARPA money did drive that conversation about the spending in the town. That was, was pushing the money to CV fiber, and what I did read was that. The, the less money that they have to borrow to essentially get. The, the service to the folks in town, they would receive a reduced, uh, service fee.
Yeah.
Overall service fees maybe would be reduced, but not specifically for the town.
My understanding is that the, the town residents would see a reduced fee. I could be wrong.
Can I say something?
I just said that I did think that the, the town residents would receive a reduced, uh, service fee, the more money the town gives. But I could be wrong.
But we should be able to, you know, I would think with a phone call, we could, or a email, we could, we could get that clarified. Before we gave the money, like, maybe this, maybe this week, we could have, we could have Sarah. Uh, reach out as our assistant and get the answer to that question, then we could make a decision at our board meeting next week, which is practically tomorrow. Just a thought, I'd just like to be sure. Before we write the big check, I'd like to be sure we know what we're, what we're doing and what we're getting, for no other reason, so we can justify it to our residents.
Hello?
Yeah.
I'm just looking at the town spending plan. Estimated replacement year for the rescue this year with twenty twenty-three marker of a hundred and forty thousand.
Liz, I can't hear you, you're awful choppy.
Can you guys hear me now?
Something with your mic.
Broken up.
Now can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, uh. So, I'm looking at the capital spending plan, and it has the rescue truck as a replacement year of twenty twenty-two. And in the budget for twenty twenty-three at a hundred and forty thousand in the capital spending plan budget. So it is in there Dorinda, but it's, um. And I'm looking at a live, you know, like a Google Doc.
Was that the rescue truck?
It says rescue from nineteen eighty-six.
But I wouldn't think it'd be a hundred and forty thousand.
Well, that's the number that the fire department gave Christian, I mean, he's.
I think that's a brand new.
Yeah.
I would be amazed if we had to spend half that amount of money.
Alright, I'm gonna put that in the comment.
Because, for the most part, we have all the equipment that needs to go in that truck, what we need is a new truck to put the equipment in. I mean, we've got the radios, the lights, the, whatever the rescue equipment is, we've got it, so. It's basically, it's basically a pickup truck with a van body on the back of it, so it can carry.
Okay, I added that to the comment, I'm not gonna take out a hundred and forty thousand, but we should. What about the town hall, not town hall, what about the, um, town shed?
How much money have you got left? We could spend it all.
I don't, I don't have anything left, I've already sent out, but, um, I'm just looking at.
I think what we, I think what we need to do, and, uh, John Rayhill, a couple of times, he would do it. He, he has ideas on how to make significant energy improvements to that building without costing a fortune, and he thinks that idea. That, you know, you can't reinforce the structure of the building, so you can add insulation is, is a falsehood. You know, that, that engineering report we got two years ago.
Yeah. Who, who did?
The next five years. The next five years for the town shed show overhead doors. At the current, current price of eleven thousand, and a roof at the current price of twenty thousand.
Why does it need, why does it need a new roof? Doesn't it need just a paint the roof? I don't know. I don't know the answer.
Replacement schedule is forty years, and it says ready for replacement, is right now.
Well.
You gotta remember, the life expectancy of that building was twenty-five years, the whole, the whole.
Listen, if we don't look at a capital spending plan and make up our own ideas, there's no point in not even using it.
No, I'm not, I'm, I truly, I understand, but I'm just, I'm just saying. Uh, you know, like putting in that rescue truck for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, I think that's crazy. What, what needs to be done to the town hall building is, is beyond what I know, but I, I respect, uh. John Rayhill and his experience and expertise, and I know he has ideas, and if he has ideas, other people will probably have ideas. About how the, how that building can be significantly improved and made so, made so it will last a reasonable period of time. I mean, we had people suggesting Randy, uh, you know, air-to-air heat exchangers. So we got the humidity out of the building, so that solved mold problem, you know, I mean. Yeah. But all I'm saying is, we need to have some money in there for that, uh, for that building. And I don't know what the amount is.
Okay, well, so far we spent a lot.
But you put in, you put in three hundred thousand for the roads?
Yeah.
At, at the end of the day, it feels like this exercise, you could have, you could have a million and a half dollars on that list. And this is just a wish list, if you will, and we're gonna, we're gonna prioritize this. And, and, you know, definitely focus on broadband, I think, on the front end. But then, as we, as we move on, we can evaluate, and this is, this is just a brainstorming exercise, so. I'm not worried about having a million and a half dollars on there to start.
I mean, as I, hold on a minute Sarah, as I said, you know, we could spend this half million dollars and another half million dollars on the road. And not have any, the roads, and not have anything for anything else, so, yes Sarah?
Um, isn't, isn't there an infrastructure bill that's giving us a lot of, that's setting a lot of money down, down the pipe to, for roads?
We don't know, everybody keeps talking about that, but we don't know, so yes, but by the time, I presume. By the time we have to make final decisions on that money, that either will have happened or it won't have happened, one or the other.
Well, I thought it was, um, we just, I just heard about it on the radio, that it's coming like now, this Monday's starting to come now, for roads.
Well, I haven't, I haven't seen anything that says the town of Middlesex is gonna get X dollars.
No, 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 not Middlesex.
What they're, what they're allocating statewide, but I didn't see it broken out, so, that's all I'm saying, we don't know. But I mean, we could get a hundred thousand, who knows, yeah, Steve.
Peter, um, as far as the town, town garage, I, I know we, we need a new town garage. But I just put twenty-five thousand in there, um, because I know one of the things that they do need is new heating system in there. They need new heaters, and, so, I, I mean, I put twenty-five thousand in there, it isn't a lot of money, but. I mean, we could spend all the money we got between the town hall and the town garage. So, we've gotta put some stuff in there, but, so I just put a small amount in there, but, uh, we do need to have something in there.
The other thing that I had with regard to the town garage is hiring somebody to build the, build the cover for our diesel tank. And getting that project completed.
Yep.
Cuz I'm afraid we're never gonna, with our resources, in a way we're going, we're never gonna be able to do it ourselves.
Right.
I don't think that's a big number, what did we, what did we think that was? Eight or ten thousand dollars, max?
Yeah, ten, it shouldn't be ten, but, so, so put in, uh. Thirty-five or forty thousand dollars total for the, for the town garage, that would cover building that. Roof over the, over the fuel tank and, and doing something with the heat.
Okay, can I just ask a question? I'm also looking at the capital spending plan. There's a boiler here that says it costs twenty years with a twenty-year lifespan, but there's actually no number in the rest of the spreadsheet. To say when the replacement year is, but you're saying it's now?
It's now.
Yeah, it says twenty thirty-two Liz, um.
Is it all the way at the end?
Well, no, so if you look at E twenty-two, on, are you talking town hall or the, uh?
No, I'm in the, I'm in the town shed, E, E fifteen boiler.
Yep, so no, he didn't put a, he didn't put a thing in there.
So that's ready for replacement now, I'm gonna add that right now.
It is.
Yeah.
Listen, it isn't a boiler, I mean, I don't know what it's gonna be, but it's likely not a boiler.
No.
But it's called a boiler.
Probably a, it's probably a, a hot air system.
It is.
Okay, I'm gonna write hot air system.
There's a place, you know.
Alright, the fuel tank says eighty-five hundred, is that the actual fuel tank itself?
No.
No, it's a roof over it.
Roof.
Yeah, but I think this is the fuel tank, not the roof.
That is the fuel tank Liz, that's in the capital improvement plan.
Okay, so we really need a fuel tank roof as well.
Yeah, cuz the fuel tank isn't slated to be replaced until twenty thirty-three.
Right.
Okay, so I better add in. A fuel tank roof. And you say that that's ten thousand?
Yes.
You guys are really spending a lot of money right now.
I'm, I'm really confused Liz, you're saying that you're added the cost for a fuel tank? That the fuel tank doesn't need to be replaced until twenty thirty-three or something, I'm confused what's going on.
Spending plan Sarah, to replace it in twenty thirty-three.
Okay. It says that Liz is going back and forth between the capital spending plan and which, which she, I'm getting confused. So, after, maybe if you guys can just sit aside five minutes at the end of the meeting to just methodically read through the list.
Yes.
Yes.
And can I get a?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanna get a clarification on this, we had said we were turning. The maintenance of the capital spending plan over to the budget committee. So, are we just making these notes for our reference? Because there's nothing being relayed to the budget committee that this is what we're doing. You know, or are we gonna relate to them that we're making these suggested things, but, so.
Well, I put it in, Dorinda, because this is a live document that they'll see. And I'm somebody who has access to making changes to it, like, if a few of us, it can go in and make changes to it. And because it's such a brand-new document, that, you know, these are, in my mind, corrections. Or clarifications that weren't, I'm not gonna start adding any of these things into the town hall plan, like. These are real things that somehow got missed, like, I'm not gonna start putting in, you know.
You shouldn't be, you shouldn't be changing anything on the capital spending plan at all.
Right, not yet, this should be just a working document within the select board.
Brainstorming.
Yeah, no, 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 I know, I'm not, this, this, there are two different things I'm doing here, it's okay. I'll let Elias know what I've done. And Randy knows too.
I mean, the, the, the challenge with all this guys is, you know. We don't know what road money's coming, we don't know if we're gonna get this grant for the town hall, I mean, there are a lot of, there are a lot of unknowns in this. So, you know, if all, uh, if all the cards line up correctly. Uh, we could have a lot more money, but as I said before, I really think. The, the balancing number in this is gonna be. If we give more money to CV fiber or we spend it on our roads, and I have a pretty good feeling after this spring. That if we ask our citizens what we should spend it on, they're gonna say spend it on the roads, but. We'll see.
And broadband.
Yes, but, but, I mean, if we're, we're dividing it up between giving more money to, uh, more money to, uh. More money to CV fiber versus the roads, I think, I would, I would bet our citizens would wanna give it to the roads. Mr. Weed, good evening.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, do you have any, any questions or anything you'd like to add to this discussion?
Uh, I just wanna put a plug into fixing the roads, one hundred percent. The fiber thing's happening from what I'm reading, regardless of this money, and. I don't know, I mean, I view, probably you guys have this all laid out, but the arteries of this town. East Hill, Center Road, Brook Road, and Molly Supple. I mean, I just came east hill for the first time, you know, all we keep doing is throwing sharp rocks and holes. And we got dirt up against the trees, I mean, it's just, it's, this town is. We gotta fix the roads, the arteries, not playing around on side roads, fix the arteries first. Then we'll be free to work on the side roads, I know everybody has a stake, but, wow.
Believe me, we hear you, I, I go over east hill every day, and I know what you're talking about. The, the, the unknown, and I'm not sure, I, I saw you pop in, and I weren't, I wasn't sure whether you heard the earlier part of this conversation. Where there supposedly, or not supposedly, there is a big pot of money coming down for the state specifically for the roads. So, until we know what that is, we can't make any decisions, but certainly. This is the time, and I think everyone agrees, this is the time to try and spend a good chunk of money on, uh, on the roads. So, we hear you loud and clear, believe me.
Okay, do you guys agree those are the arteries of the town?
Yes.
We're on life support right now, that's bad, gotta stop throwing sharp rocks and holes, that makes no sense.
Well, we were in, as you know, and you, you experienced it like, like we all did, but. We were in, in the emergency mode this summer, now, I mean, this winter or this spring, now we've got to figure out, figure out where we go. But, the one decision we did make, which is why that dirt is in the trees, is that we're not gonna grade that powdery mucky slate. Back into the roads like we have in recent years, we're gonna scoop it up and get it out of there. Cuz that's, that's part of the problem, that, what's left of that slate, it's just a nightmare in the summer. It's a nightmare when it thaws out in the spring.
Yeah, not, not to interrupt you Aaron, and, and we all do agree with you, but. We don't need to talk about the roads so much and what's wrong with them, but. Getting back to our list here, I'm just, just saying, we're trying to, trying to do a, a, a list of items. That this ARPA money could be used for, and, and, uh, we've all agreed that the town roads need money.
Copy that.
Okay, well, thank you, if you, if you have anything else to add, raise your hand or. Jump up and down or something, and we'll, we'll recognize you. Is there anything that anybody can think of that we've missed? We've created quite a laundry list, not, not saying that we've, uh. We've set the amounts, but I think we've created the. We've set the amounts, but I think we've created the, created the laundry list in terms of town equipment. I think all our town equipment, unless I'm wrong, is, is pretty much. On the list to be replaced when it needs to be replaced. I know we've talked about the excavator. That's all on the capital spending plan, I believe, Liz.
Yeah.
The excavator, the butt loader. Yes, Randy.
So you, the excavator is a topic of conversation because I understand that there's quite a few repairs that might potentially need to be. Taken place there and, uh, from a budget committee's viewpoint. Um, I'm wondering if this is further out in the, uh. In, in the replacement plan, then we might be willing to swallow when a, a. Ten to fifteen thousand dollar bill comes for, um, for the bottom side of that excavator. Knowing that we're gonna try to replace it and I think it was two or three years.
I think it's, I think it's two.
Yeah, so, you know, my understanding in talking with, with Victor and Shane a little bit over the. Past eight months or whatever is that, um, you know, that's a pretty serious. Question on their minds anyway, as, as, you know, is, is dumping. Fifteen thousand dollars into a, a machine that I think they were valuing at. Twenty-five thousand or something like that for trade-in value. Uh, and you probably know more than I do, Steve, but, um, you know, I've heard bits and pieces of that conversation and. And I think it's something that, that we as a, as a board. And the, the budget committee should probably be looking at and what the options are because. We all know how the equipment fares lately and we don't, we don't, we're not on the good side of, of the, the side of good luck there, so.
Oh, let's see.
I'll also add that right now our interest rates are, are pretty good. They're starting to go up. I've seen increases. Um, so I mean, it might be something we really wanna think about sooner than later too at that. Um, not that I wanna see the town go into a bunch of debt service, but. Um, if you're gonna do it in two years, you might be better off doing it. Within another year and get a better interest rate.
Well, and the, and the question is. You know, you said it exactly right, Dorinda. If we can, if we can still get the good interest rate, typically. Typically, we don't go out and buy town equipment for, for cash. So the question is whether we want to use our ARPA money for that or whether we want to. Take a ten-year note or whatever we need to do to buy an, buy an excavator. I also think the. What, what I heard, the conversation I heard was. Be better to have a smaller excavator rather than a big excavator that'd be more useful. So maybe it won't be quite as expensive, but. I agree, it's a good thing to, uh, it's a good thing to look at. I mean, it is, it is a killer that you put a, you know, you put new, uh. Basically new underpinnings under that excavator and spend fifteen thousand dollars and it doesn't increase the value of the excavator by half that amount of money. I've, I've done those kinds of things myself many times. I know how it goes. It's not good. What else? So, so Liz, I would, I would put a note in there about the excavator.
It's gonna cost a lot. How much we want to put in?
What do you think, Steve, Randy?
Hundred and thirty-five?
For a natural.
I don't know.
You mean for a brand new excavator?
Yeah, I mean, if you're talking about a brand new excavator, they're, they're, you know, that size is. Probably in that, in that price range.
Yeah, probably up towards one fifty.
But I thought, aren't I, aren't I right that there was discussion that it would be more useful to have a smaller excavator? And hire out when we needed a big excavator? I don't.
I don't think the excavator we have is oversized. I just, they were talking about not getting a bigger one, doing any bigger work with. You know, like, we can't reach down over some of these banks and get into the brook when it's down there ten or twelve feet. You can't. Can't get there with that excavator, so.
Right.
This is showing on the capital spending plan a hundred and seventy K in twenty twenty-four.
That's with trade-in. Two hundred, two hundred without.
Oh, right, so it is expensive. And it's gonna be only more expensive.
Don't forget, we bought this one as a used, a used piece of equipment. It wasn't brand new when we bought this one.
Right.
I don't know that we necessarily, I don't know, if we want to put these things in that are art, like, I mean, all these things that are in our. Capital spending plan. I mean, I sort of were, sort of like we're looking and adding them in.
I think just making a note.
Here's the thing again. Things that we would, I'll use the excavator as an example. That's a normal piece of equipment which we're gonna replace and use and replace and use, just like we do our heavy trucks. I, I view this ARPA money as a, as a chance to take care of some one-time. I hate to say once in a lifetime, but it'll probably be once in my lifetime for sure. Type expenditures. I mean, if we're planning for a new excavator, just like a new ten-wheel truck or a new grader or whatever it is. We can buy that, uh, through our normal, through our normal operating process. So I hate to. I hate to, uh. Spend this ARPA money on those expenditures, but I, I think it's good to put them on there and then we can, then we can weed them out, but. I just, you know, to put a, to put a substantial amount of money into the roads now. Which we wouldn't be able to do, especially when we're doing this paving project and other things. Um, that's exactly the kind of thing that I think we should be using this money for. And, you know, money for the town hall, absolutely. Money for the, money for those things for the fire department, absolutely. Um, but things like, things like a new excavator or a new this and new that, I, I think. Those are sort of built into our regular ongoing operating expenses. And yes. I agree with Dorinda. If we can, we can borrow the money now cheaper, we might, we might want to do it because. Everything I read and see is the interest rates are gonna be, it'll take a while to, to filter down to the town type money, but they were talking. I think, I think they were, the Fed was talking like a three-quarter of a point, uh. Interest rate increase potentially next week, and that's huge. I mean, that hasn't happened in forever, so.
Well, and that's, you know, let's not forget that, you know, some of this stuff is gonna take. A year or more to even get. So we order something that's gonna be, you know. Twelve to eighteen months before we even see whatever it is that we're, we're getting, so. Um, I, I mean, I view this process as throwing everything on the, on the chalkboard and then kind of scoring. You know, giving higher priorities to the impact to the town residents, um, and whatnot, you know, so. That's, that's the job that I see in front of us is throw everything up on the board and then. You know, sit back and kind of score everything with thinking about how it impacts the town residents the most.
Yep, I agree. So let's, uh, it's six o'clock. Unfortunately, I have to leave in fifteen minutes. Are we, are we ready to come up with our? Our revised master list to give, uh, Sarah, Liz?
Yeah, I mean, I've just been typing in, making notes, um. On right now, we have, uh. Including the three hundred thousand dollars and a hundred and seventy thousand for an excavator. We have a nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar budget.
Well, I would rec, I would recommend we whack the, whack the excavator out of there. I mean, I think that's our normal, normal operating expenses and, uh. You have three, that, hold, hold on a minute, Aaron. We have three hundred thousand in for the roads?
Yeah.
Uh, we can leave that in there for the time being for, for a plug number. I mean, the, the, the crap shoot in this is whether, you know. How much road money we're gonna get from the state. If we get a gigantic chunk of money from the state, we may not need all of that. Not that we can use it. And if we get the grant for the town hall, I mean, that's, that's gonna get us right down where we, uh. Where we want to be. Aaron, you had a comment? Aaron?
Uh, I just wanted to chime in on the, uh. On excavator. I, I don't know how many hours it gets a year. You know, this is, I'm sure is a different topic altogether, but. Fifteen grands cheaply compared to a new excavator. That thing sits probably ten and a half months out of the year, maybe eleven months out of the year. And you buy a new one, you're getting all the new tier four crap. It's gonna give us problems down the line.
Just like our trucks. I know, I know. We're not, we're not buying excavators right, right off the bat. Yes, Sarah.
Could Liz just read through the list that really slowly?
Yes. Okay, the first thing on the list is C V fiber.
And that's, that's one hundred thousand?
Yeah, one hundred thousand.
Okay.
The fire department turnout gear at twenty thousand. Town hall planning study. If we don't get the V C D P grant, we'd make it thirty thousand.
What about the air packs for the?
I haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, all right. Okay, all right.
Nothing's in order. There's nothing in any logical. Um, town hall rehabilitation grant match possibility. I threw in fifty thousand. Or just in general, we could have grant matches because we know lots of grants are coming out. Remodeling the town hall with temporary fixes at fifty thousand.
Can we just say remodeling, not temporary fixes? I mean, they're not temporary fixes. If we put a new heating system in, that's not a temporary fix.
Okay. Um, retention bonuses and salary increases that we already paid for. For fifty K. Um, roads, mud mitigation, three hundred K. With a note that the Build Back Better funds will probably cover the majority of the cost. Or may cover all the cost. Um, air packs at sixty-five thousand. That's per the capital spending plan, what they have in there. And Peter's version of a rescue vehicle at twenty-five K. Versus the hundred and forty K.
Economy rescue vehicle.
The no-throw rescue vehicle. Um, let's see, uh. I wrote for the Millsacks Community Fund. To give to town groups requesting funding and townspeople in need, twenty-five thousand.
It said ten.
Well, I increased it because I have my fingers on the keyboard.
Because your finger's on the button.
Remember, we can always, we know where it cut.
Where's the number, where's the number for the select board retreat?
Right, air, already said air packs, rescue vehicle, already said that, a remote meeting equipment, four thousand. And town garage repairs. Twenty-five K for new heating system and ten K for roof for the fuel tank. Equalling thirty-five K. And that total right now. Comes to a lot. Let me see. Equals some. Ooh, expensive. Seven fifty-four. That's not bad. Say, is that right?
It's about right.
Yeah, seven fifty-four.
All right, that's, I think that's a good start.
Me too.
Thank you.
Well, I'm back finally.
Steve's on his phone.
Hi, Steve.
That's, that's because of our beautiful broadband.
That's right.
So Steve, what, what we've got, and I don't know, I don't know when you got, when you came back in, uh. Liz just went down through our list. It worth seven fifty-four right now with.
Yeah.
Fifty thousand for town garage repairs, three hundred thousand for the roads, a hundred thousand for C V fiber. And all the other things we've talked about. So I think, I think that's a pretty good place to be right now. I mean, if we, if we get the town hall grant. And we get a good chunk of money from the state for the roads. We're gonna be on Easy Street.
Yep. Yep, I, I was, I was wondering if, if that list could be distributed to the select board. So that we can look at.
It'll be in the minutes, Steve.
It's in the minutes and I'll send the minutes out tomorrow.
Oh, okay. The other thing I was wondering is, uh, and I don't have a current. Uh, thing for, for our fund balance. I know Dorinda brought it up originally and I, and I think that'd be a good thing to be able to look at too.
Well, what, our town fund balance is about a hundred and fifty, right, Dorinda?
No, she said.
In our funds themselves are, that we. For those, um, we have four sixty-two, but a lot, some of those don't apply to us being able to use, like. Um, the restoration fund is not gonna apply here. The town forest fund isn't gonna apply here. I mean, I can give you the numbers for the ones that would apply, but, um, these are numbers that were kind of, you know. Yeah. I mean, I can give them, yeah, I can send those out, no problem. I haven't, this was as of March. We haven't gotten April, yeah.
Right, right. I just, I just want to point out, you know, that includes things like the paving fund, the bridge fund, you know.
That's right.
We're building up those funds for other things. We can use. We can use and have used in the past money from those funds to cover cash flow shortfalls, but not to cover, uh. Not to cover real money shortfalls.
And to the paving fund, there's two hundred and fifty-nine thousand in that fund and of that we have the Center Road project that's gonna eat up over. Is gonna eat up, um, I think a couple hundred there, so.
That's easy.
Easy. So you're really talking, that's gonna be knocked down by a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
The true sort of, wait, can I just ask a question from my greater understanding? The true sort of fund balance in terms of less funds, meaning like non-allocated funds. Yeah, is what, like more like a hundred and sixty, you said?
Uh, I'd have to go back. Um, I mean, that's always a moving target. Um. I would have to go back and because depending where we come in at year end, like we're overspent for this budget year, I would assume we're gonna be. So I would have to take, um, what the audit came up with and then back out what I think we're gonna be short. This year to come up with something. Because that money, that includes like taxes we haven't collected yet. It's a hard number to come up with like that, you know?
Yeah.
I would, I would tell you, I, I would tell you, I believe at the end of last year. The number was like a hundred and forty, I mean, I, I could be wrong. This is just popping into my head, like a hundred and forty-seven thousand. We certainly are gonna lose money this year, so it could easily be a hundred thousand. I mean, it is.
There, there isn't a lot of extra money sitting there and like Peter said, we use it to as cash flow. Yeah. Okay.
Sorry, I, I really have to, uh, I really have to go. You're welcome to continue the meeting and the, and the discussion. I, I apologize for this, but I think we're pretty much. Pretty much there, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump off and I'll look forward to seeing your comments in the, uh. In the minutes. Okay, and we, we've got our board meeting next week. Don't forget, every week. Here we go.
Hey, um, before you go, let me just ask you something. I'm going to put the C V fiber allocation on the, on the agenda for Tuesday. Does that make sense?
Yes. Now, Sarah, when are you leaving?
Well, I hope to leave Monday. I'm still waiting for COVID tests. I was at a conference in there. Well, I hope to leave Monday. I'm still waiting for COVID tests. I was at a conference and there was a super spreader event.
But I mean, we have a plan, we have a plan in place to cover our select.
Dorinda's going to, uh, she's gonna control the meeting. And you guys can just record the meeting on on Zoom and I'll do the minutes.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Have a good trip.
Hope I get, hope I get to go.
Is this your book? Another book tour, Sarah?
I'm going to visit Anna and and Paul.
Be sure you dodge any missiles you see coming in.
Yeah, let's not joke about that.
I'm not joking.
I know.
I'm sorry, guys. I've gotta go. Have a. Bye bye.
Okay. Is there anything else you wanna talk about?
I don't think so, not.
I don't wanna talk about anything else.
I think like Peter said, we pretty much covered it, right?
And if you think of anything else, you can shoot me, like, we just like, oh, remember when we talked about at the select board meeting? And we forgot, um.
Yeah.
I'll add it to the spreadsheet. If you wanna shoot me an email, I'll just put it on my little spreadsheet.
Okay.
Okay. Bye, everybody.
Have a good night.
All right.
Thanks for coming in.
Bye.
Bye.